I'd like to call our meeting to order. Is our motion for our board to reconvene and to open session?
Senator Mayhane?
All right, is that second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for taking time to join us, whether in person or remotely. During our meeting, I'd like to ask each board member to state his or her name when making a motion or when speaking. At this time, I'm going to ask each board member to verbally indicate their presence when I call their name. Mrs. Rosemary Mayhane.
Present.
Mrs. Rebecca Moner.
Present.
Mrs. Amy Richards.
Present.
Dr. Daniel Wallace.
Present.
And I am Ralph Fallon. I would like, at this time, to recognize two special individuals. Supervisor Ingram, thank you so much for joining us, and we appreciate everything that you're doing to work collaboratively with the school system. So, thank you very much. And Ms. Iris Lane, it is a former board member and very active in the community, and we're very nice to have, very nice to have you with us. So, thank you. Okay, at this time, I need a motion to verify that our closed session was conducted in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3712, Paragraph D, and that only matters exempted from open meeting requirements and only matters identified in the motion to go into closed session were discussed. Is there such a motion?
Daniel Wallace, salute.
Is there a second?
Amy Richards, second.
Ms. Mayhane, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Moner?
Aye.
Mrs. Richards?
Aye.
Dr. Wallace?
Aye.
Chair of votes, aye, and the closed session has been verified. At this time, if there are no objections, I would like to ask Ms. Rosemary Mayhane to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come together today for our school board meeting, I ask that you guide and direct us in our discussions and preparations, that our decisions may be in the best interests of our children and pleasing in your sight. I pray for all community members, not only those within Westmoreland County, but in the state, country, and world, as we navigate to live in this world with others and overcome the pressures and complications of the day. There are many today who are cold and hungry, Lord, both in body and in spirit. I pray that you will lay your hands upon them and bring them nourishment, warmth, comfort, and peace. Help us to find that place within each of us that reaches out to others to bridge gaps and biases, feed the hungry, house the homeless, and love those who seem unlovable. Let your light shine in each of us as we touch the lives of others in our everyday activities. I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Mayhane. At this time, let's stand and honor our country by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there volunteer to read our statement of vision and our statement of mission?
I will. The vision: To provide an exemplary learning environment that empowers all students to find their voices and make meaningful contributions to the world. Our mission: Together, we will nurture the unlimited potential of all students through inclusion, authentic learning experiences.
Thank you so much, Ms. Richards. Do we have any suggested additions or changes to our agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none, our agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Next, we have student and staff attendance recognition for October. Ms. Rice?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. We will start with student attendance. This month, at Copel Elementary School, the average daily attendance was 94.85%. At Washington District Elementary, 93.92%. Montross Middle School, 93.64%. And Westmoreland High School, 92.21%. So, winning this month for student attendance is Copel Elementary. Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations to Copel.
And now for staff attendance. Beginning again with Copel Elementary School, the average daily staff attendance for October, Copel Elementary, 92.48%. Washington District Elementary, 87.19%. Montross Middle School, 94.37%. And Westmoreland High School, 90.87%. So, our winner for staff attendance is Montross Middle School. I think we have to borrow Ms. Angel's trophy for the photo op.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Montross Middle. Okay, next, we have Character Trait Honorable for the month of October. Mr. McConville?
Yes, we'd like to invite the principals forward, celebrating responsibility this month.
Good evening. For Copel Elementary, our Student of the Month for October is First Grader Aubrey Phelps in Ms. Wood's class. Aubrey, or Ms. Wood said that Aubrey is such a responsible and dependable student. She comes to class prepared and always takes great care of her belongings and our classroom materials. She follows directions, uses kind and polite words, and is a wonderful role model for her classmates. Aubrey helps keep our classroom neat and organized, participates eagerly in activities, and works so well with others. She takes pride in her work and shows great ownership of her learning. I'm so proud of her efforts and positive attitude every day. It doesn't look like she's here.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm representing Dr. Repas and Ms. Calvo this evening. And the Washington District Student of the Month for October is Carson Bland, and from Ms. Betts' 4th grade class. Carson is easily one of the most responsible students in our school. He is dependable and reliable, getting his work done and always following the rules. He is trustworthy and conscientious of his actions at all times. Carson is also an amazing big brother who always looks out for his little sister. Carson sets the example of responsibility for other students. Congratulations, Carson Bland, Crab Student of the Month for October.
Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm Janet Garland, the principal at Montross Middle School. There's no greater honor than to present an award to a student. Our Student of the Month is Leila Pollard. Leila is a responsible student who cares about her performance in school and strives to always do well. She's extremely conscientious about completing her assignments and asks questions about her assignments to make sure she's completing them correctly. She exhibits responsibility by always coming to school prepared with her materials and ready to learn. When she's absent from school, she is always sure to ask about any of her missing work. She participates in class frequently, asks questions, and discusses her own opinions about topics in civics class, showing that she also takes responsibility for her own learning. Her involvement and engagement in the classroom shows her desire to learn and her determination to succeed. Congratulations, Leila.
Hi, my name is Michael Batke, principal at Westmoreland High School. WH Student of the Month for October goes to Kalen Reeves, grade 12, dominated by Ms. Higman. Kalen consistently demonstrates responsibility through her reliability, authority, and strong sense of accountability. She takes ownership of her actions, meets deadlines without reminders, and always comes prepared for class. Her strong time management and organizational skills allow her to balance academic work with extracurricular commitments successfully. Kalen is dependable and can be trusted to complete any task thoroughly and on time, whether it's working independently or in a group. She follows through on commitments and sets a positive example for her peers. WH Student of the Month for October responsibility goes out to Kalen Reeves.
Thanks.
Congratulations to all of our students that are being recognized. We appreciate their accomplishments. We also have to recognize parents, teachers, and administrators, because it takes all. So, thank you so much. Next, I'm very pleased to welcome a new organization that is already in the process of occupying WNL High School. Our hearts in motion. If you'd like to come forward, please. We're very pleased to have you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Annie, and this is Sarah. We're from Hearts in Motion, and we are beyond thrilled to be in the old, former WNL building. And we're going to tell you a little bit about our programs tonight that we have. Just a quick history about us. We opened our first dance studio in September of 2017 at the Old Lurdi Shops down on Route 3. Our original name was the Time to Dance Studio. It was opened in honor, in memory of my sister-in-law, who had passed away, and this was our original, our original space. And we ended up closing in May of 2019 due to COVID restrictions. We reopened again in October 2022 in Montross. And at this location, we've been able to offer dance classes, art classes, guitar lessons. We did have an activity center the first year, but we closed it due to the building conditions just weren't, weren't the best. And we were there until the end of October, when Matt Ingram so graciously came and found us and asked if we would be interested in moving into the former high school, and we started packing right away. And so, we just want to say thank you, thank you to everyone in Westmoreland County that made it possible. Definitely, Matt, I kept praying, I said, "God, whatever I'm supposed to do, the person has to come find me." And he just popped in one day, and I was like, "Okay, well, it's a sign." And he works, yes, the rest is history. And thank you, Kathy, for taking the time to get with us as well. I mean, I know you all are so busy with school, so it's just been, it's been wonderful, you all taking the time to get us in there. And Matt brought his students from the Roanoke Tech Center, cleaned the whole library, the classrooms, the ceiling tiles. I mean, it was, if you would have seen it, did you have a before picture?
No, I did not.
I wish we had a before picture, but they worked so hard, and it's just, it's, it's been amazing. And every kid that's come in the past two weeks, they're just like, "Whoa, it's so big." And as a former school teacher, it's just exciting to, I feel like I'm back in school again, so I just, I love it. So, thank you all so much.
I would like to give any board member an opportunity to make any comments if they would like to, and they can do it, yeah, and they can do it anytime.
Okay.
We, we do offer a variety of portable dance classes in very, like, a variety of styles, including tap jazz, hip-hop, ballet, many, many more, acro. We offer creative movement, tumbletime, and reset move to our tiniest little dancers. These classes help get them used to being in a dance studio and what it means to be in dance classes. We have fundamental dance classes to learn technique, fundamentals, and classes that work on stage presence. Our goal, our main goal in these classes is to build friendships, keep them moving, have fun, building confidence, and learning new skills. On Tuesdays, we do have an amazing art class right there at the end with Ms. Elizabeth. She has art classes for ages six to 10, and she's filling up fast, hoping to add more for some of our younger and older kids.
And this is our current team right now, myself and Sarah, and pictures of our daughters, because, you know, this is all, it is, it's all about the kids, and this is just something that we've been able to do for them. Our current, our current director is Elise Beckham. She, she went to Penns?
Penn State.
She's from Pennsylvania, like so many around here, but she didn't come here to teach. She came down, and her husband is actually from Montross. And they were going to move back to Pennsylvania, but then I was able to help, my husband got her husband a job, and we got her to stay, and she has been absolutely wonderful. And she can walk, she can walk to WNL, too. So, it's, it's just been really nice to see her do so much. And our girls, we have Ms. Julie, Ms. Gracie, and Ms. Hannah, who have been with us for several years now. Ms. Elizabeth in the corner. And then, we're so lucky to have some junior teachers right now, Nessa, Leah, and Isabella. That's kind of how we all started in the beginning when I first opened. We just had two seniors in high school that taught the classes, kind of going through the mentor-mentee type thing, and just all the kids working together in different age groups. It's just, it's a lot of fun. And we would like to offer more things in the future than just, than just dance as well.
We do have a recital in May at the close of each season. Westmoreland High School has been our primary location, and thank you for allowing us to go there. They're usually at the end of May, beginning of June each year, and everybody is welcome to attend.
Yes, and we've just, we're so appreciative for, like I said, the high school the past three years. You know, Mr. Ricky has taken us under wing as well. Now he knows we're down here, so I, I'm just, we're just grateful for all employees all around, and just, we look forward to offering more and even getting, you know, more students to come in and help as well.
Are there other organizations close to you all where you all would be able to do competitions eventually?
We do do competitions, actually.
Okay. So, maybe WNL would be a good location for future competitions, bring them here?
Yeah, that would be awesome. We hadn't, never even thought of that, so that would be great. I like it.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Well, we'll explain it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to maintain our excitement. We have another organization that is very interested, and we've had discussions about moving into the annex at WNL High School. So, it's Transition Day Support Services. So, at this time, if you'd like to tell us what you would like to about your organization and plans?
My name's Jocelyn Key. I'm a transition. I'm going to be passing out some power.
Jocelyn?
Over here. Okay. Your mission? Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. I'll share with you.
Members of board, my name is Rashid Williams, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here and present before you today. I represent Transition Day Support Services, and we're going to take the next few minutes to introduce ourselves. I am joined today by our Director of Operations, Ms. Jocelyn Key. And Jocelyn's been with us now for about two years now, and my mother sends her regards. She apologizes that she couldn't make it today, but she sends her regards, and she's anxiously waiting on a debrief once this is over. Just by way of introduction, Transition Day Support Services is a family-owned operation. We opened our doors in 2007, and it is a family-owned operation that's co-owned by myself, my mother, and our grandfather, Colonel Retired Chris W. Stevens. He is 98 years old. He is a retired Army Colonel, and he quite literally is still actively engaged in the day-to-day operations of the business. So, I'm going to have to give him a call as well. We first opened our doors in Richmond, Virginia. We opened our doors in 2007. We didn't fully begin operations from a licensing standpoint until 2009. At our peak, we operated two facilities simultaneously. We had a day support program in Richmond, Virginia, and we also had a program in Warsaw, Virginia. During the pandemic, we shut down operations for a period of time. And from there, during the latter portion of the pandemic, we concentrated our operations in Warsaw, Virginia, and reallocated the resources in Richmond, Virginia, and refocused to the Northern Neck. Currently, we operate one full-time day support program in Warsaw, Virginia. And as of a few months ago, approximately six months at this point, we also opened a community engagement program in Tappahannock, Virginia. And so, we offer two different services under our license, under license by Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Human Services. We offer the day support program, and we also offer community engagement programs. So, what you'll see is a bifurcated offering of services out of the same company. So, go to the next slide. Our mission at Transition Day Support Services is that at transitions, we envision a community where everyone is empowered to thrive. Our mission is to provide individuals with developmental disabilities the resources, support, and opportunities they need to lead fulfilling and productive lives. Next slide. Our next page is just a breakdown of Transition Day Support Services by the numbers. And really, this is more of a demographic demonstration of where we are essentially. I broke it down into group day support program and also into the community engagement program. Under our group day support program, we currently employ a total of eight people. In our community engagement program in Tappahannock, we currently employ three people. Our total number of participants, and by participants, I mean students, people who come to us for services. In our group day program, we have a total number of 25 participants. And in our community engagement program, right now, we have 14 participants with an outsized waiting list. How many people do we have on our waitlist right about now?
Six.
Six. Okay. So, from a logistical standpoint, we could be at 20 fairly soon. So, as stands right now, we can provide services to a total number of almost 40 people. Specific to Westmoreland County, right now, we have a total of three participants in our group day program from Westmoreland County right now. And in our community engagement program, we have a total of three people in that program as well. How many employees do we have from Westmoreland County? Zero at this point. I'm highlighting numbers three and four in this slide because, in particular, those two demographics, we hope increase those numbers by our participation in this program and bringing it to Westmoreland County. So, we would like to see our ability to serve members of Westmoreland County at a much higher rate and have them travel less further away for those services by bringing the services closer to them. And so, that's our goal, and that's ultimately why we want to come to Westmoreland County and bring our ability to serve those in the developmentally disabled community within Westmoreland County here, so that we can be closer to those services. From a demographic standpoint, that's where we stand. So, at this point, if any members of the school board have any questions of us, we're happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments from anyone?
Need it.
I can't even begin to tell you what this means to have, have you guys closer. The amount of money we've spent over the years for how many years now, having to send them into Richmond and to Fredericksburg, to know that that would be right here and in our community and working with our citizens and help to incorporate them into our communities is huge. It's huge. So, I recognize that.
We know that some work needs to be done before you can actually begin services here. Do you have a target date that you would like to begin operations in Westmoreland County?
Ideally, we'd like to get in there by February 2026. You know, we talked a little bit in our previous meeting about just the structural challenges, but I, I think any of those structural challenges can really be done in a matter of months. So, yeah, we'd like to get in there as soon as possible. So, I'm, I'm targeting February. After this meeting, we'll all work with Matt in terms of logistics, manpower, to just get in there and see what needs to be done, but that's, that's our target date.
Any other questions?
Do you have any brochures about the services that are provided?
Not only do we have brochures, we have quite a few takeaways from, for you all. So, I'm not going to waste any time.
I do, I do want to just add something, just to add to how we get our participants. We partner with the Community Service Board, Middle Peninsula Northern Neck, Behavioral Health now. So, that's how we get our referrals, as well as families who find us on Facebook, which, if you guys don't follow us on Facebook, please follow us on Facebook, and our website. And then, we also, we're trying to bridge the gap to the high schools, because we're realizing a lot of our folks who age out at 22 don't always even know the services available to them if they aren't connected. don't always even know the services available to them if they aren't connected to the Community Service Board. So that's how we get our folks.
Anyone else? Ms. Rice?
We are excited to have you all so close here in the community. And our Director of Special Education and our Director of Student Services are both here in the audience. They're eager to hear how they can collaborate with you all, with our high school students who are aging out.
Yes, and just to be clear too, this is adults, so it's 18 and up. And it's a waiver service, so it's funded through Medicaid. So yeah, so just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Well, again, we are, we are very excited.
Thank you so much.
And look forward to when you actually start operations, so.
Do you have a question? Yes. Iris is asking, what kind of activities do we do? Our main focus is to be integrated in the community. So volunteering, opportunity, leisure opportunities, like bowling, which bowling is a huge hit. We also encourage our folks to be independent. We have a cooking club to just start it, you know, within our day support program where the individuals are able to lead that. You know, I wanna, I wanna be part of a cooking club. How do I do that? And then we just help, you know, help that make, help make that possible for them.
Yes. Sorry. This brings back memories.
We understand.
What are some of the types of developmental disabilities that your participants have?
Yeah, so intellectual disabilities, like autism and cerebral palsy and things like that. So we support a wide variety of people. Some people may be non-verbal or verbal. Some people use adaptive equipment, some don't. So it really does just vary. And like I said, a lot of our folks are just coming straight out of high school, aging out at 22, or if they choose not to do the extended school year at 18 and looking for something to do. And what we've found is sometimes it's like, the person could be like 45 and never even known that they had services available to them. So we're able to get them around, you know, other people. They're able to make friends and have socialization and community integration.
I love you both.
My daughter was handicapped, so there were no services like yours here while she was alive. And it wasn't until she moved to Matthews County and moved into the Brambles that she finally had day support services. And I realized, I knew before how significant and important they were. But if it was no more than those adults get together and paint each other's nails or do each other's hair, or go down and play bingo at the senior center, or whatever. Just the camaraderie these, these adults get. Because it was so different, because there for a while, when she left school, she essentially was at my home every day with no one, no social activity. So this is just huge for our community.
Yes.
Huge.
So thank you again. Okay, next we have Virginia College Application Week.
I'm Stephanie Pena, I'm the registrar. And I want you all to know, I won't be speaking anymore. I'll be like this. A PowerPoint, no videos. So this is Mrs. Catherine Jackson. She's our one and only professional school counselor at Westmoreland High School. And then we have Ms. Gracie Hill, a senior at Westmoreland High School, Ms. Kirsten Ferguson.
Another senior.
That's another senior, Westmoreland High School.
Also, Gracie is Senior Class President and President of National Honor Society. And Kirsten is Secretary of National Honor Society and Vice President of Students Council. And they're gonna talk to you about Virginia College Application.
Okay, so on October 20th to October 24th is Virginia Application Week. It provides a fantastic opportunity for students and under-resourced Virginia high schools to receive support and guidance as they apply to post-secondary institutions. We want to make sure that all students have the chance to pursue a higher education. All seniors were scheduled, had a scheduled time every day to work on college applications and anything else that would help them in their post-secondary goals. With the help of your school counselor and our pathways advisor, Ms. Alsa Garrett, who loves a lot of this process, our RCC navigator and our GRAS advisor and our registrar. Okay, so there were few application waivers, which was a huge thing for us because you have to take a lot of lunch, so. Okay, so the students who participated in College Application Week were entered in a raffle to win a prize. So the amount of colleges that you applied for each day were the amount of tickets with your name on it that were entered into the raffle. And we had prizes like a snack box and a long water bottle, Lego set, a Bluetooth speaker, a power bank, and our grand prize was beat headphones. We also had the opportunity to do onsite admission. I was one of the four students who got accepted that day.
All right.
Pretty nice. You know, it was fast acceptance. Okay, this is V A C R A O. We had a college fair during College Application Week. We had 35 participants from colleges, trade schools, and military that joined us. And here are some of the students walking around during the college fair. 692 applications were submitted that week and we saved $30,870.
All right.
Okay, here are some of the universities that students applied to from our school. This is a very small percent of them, but all good colleges. Okay, Virginia Common Application Week helped me apply to 20 different schools. I originally wasn't gonna start applying probably until the final, like, final deadline. So V E C O was a good thing that allowed me to get those applications done. I know my peers also took the opportunity to use this week to get stuff done. And Ms. Jackson and Ms. Alsa Garrett, Ms. Payne, all made it an environment where we could work. So that was very nice. They would have students who weren't being, like, productive. They had them, you know, go back to class, so it was pretty nice. And plenty of students took this opportunity and it was productive and permanent and very essential. As someone who has always had the aspiration of attending college and furthering my education, Virginia Application Week gave me the tools to achieve my goal. Not only did V E C O provide guidance to my counselors, but it also gave me the confidence and push I needed to face my college to do this. After this week, I had only been more motivated and excited to apply, not just to colleges, but also scholarships. During this week, we're also given application fee waivers, which we touched on earlier, for all Virginia colleges. As previously mentioned, this saved families and students a tremendous amount of money. For me specifically, this not only reduced my parents' stress level, but mine as well. With this opportunity, I was able to apply to some colleges that I wasn't sure that I was gonna get in, but wanted a shot anyway, without the worry of flooding my parents with expenses. I applied to universities that I may not have much interest in, but why not? Overall, Virginia Application Week encourages students' educational journeys, alleviates financial stress, and allows more freedom when applying.
Any board member have any questions?
I just want to say that I attended the day that the university's college, I was in a picture.
Yeah, you were in a picture.
It was, yeah.
It's just like, you didn't have to go back to that.
I had a wonderful time. I really did. And seeing how many schools were there, to talk to our students and everything, and alumni. I have shown no university. They were there. That was so exciting. But I just really enjoyed the interaction and the excitement that the students had to have conversations with the schools.
Yeah, they make it fun, especially with the prizes and the competition.
Oh, you should have seen the guys that were all about doing the Marines. Was it Marines?
Yeah.
Oh, they were doing the pull-up bar.
Oh, and we would like to let you all know that NHS and SCA are hosting a food drive through
December 12.
December 12 for donations. If y'all want to donate, that would be great.
Where would you like us to drop our donations off?
So you can drop it off and give it to me, or the homerooms are having a competition, so you can support your favorite homeroom as well. The homeroom that brings the most food is getting an ice cream party.
Mr. Lightfoot's homeroom.
I was gonna say, do I get one of those?
I sent it out to the teacher and he was the first one. He's like, I have 24 kids, so.
Make sure she has enough ice cream.
Do you have a number of students who were accepted, Debbie?
So the acceptances, because they kind of roll in, and it depends on the school. I know we've had at least, I think, 50 acceptances so far. But the schools give acceptances at different rates, because some of them apply like regular decision, rolling admissions, early decision, and all that. So some of them won't find out until like March, but I think we've had at least 50 so far. But we do write our acceptances when they let us know on the windows of the counseling office. So come stop by and you can see the row as the year goes on.
So looking at the list of universities there, Harvard, Brown, and Yale were there?
Yeah.
So did they waive fees?
No.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
But a lot of our students already qualify for fee waivers. And Common App does this really cool thing where they'll give you fee waivers for everything on their program. But for Virginia College Application Week, when we have, for the schools that we have codes for, even our students that don't, aren't eligible for regular fee waivers, they can use those codes that week.
Just like, that just jumped out at me as like, what?
They just took the opportunity to apply.
Were there any schools that you didn't think you could get into, but you wanted to try? And so that was a good reason to try?
Yeah, they were a good there, actually. And it was the bigger universities that I, like that, that I wanted to apply to. Like, no, I'm not gonna get in. That had the highest, like, fee waiver, like, I mean, fee price, like $85 for this one, $85 for that one. It's like, what's the point of applying to this? Like, I'm just wasting money at that point. But with the fee waiver, it's like, eh, might as well do it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from anyone? In a way, outstanding presentation. And thank, thank you for all the help.
Can I ask one more question? While I have you here, since I know you're president of the, I was at the National Honor Society induction the other night. And so how many were there?
That got inducted? There's 32 of y'all. 16.
Yeah, it was a big group, a really big group.
It was one of our biggest inductions.
So I was just really proud of you. I just wanted to say that.
Oh, thank you.
I was in the audience. It was cool to watch another group go through.
Ms. Payne, Ms. Jackson, again, thank you very much. It's always so nice to have students participate in our board meetings, and you did a great job.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the Eagle Invitational UAV Drone Competition. Mr. Lightfoot?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm Jay Lightfoot and Dylan made me promise not to talk.
Hello, school board. My name is Dylan Fernandez. I'm a sophomore at Westmoreland High School.
My name is Richard. I'm also a sophomore at high school.
And our presentation is on Eagle Invitational, which is a UAV slash drone competition. Introduction. We'll tell you more about it, we'll talk specifics and goals. Tell you what we need help from you guys. And encourage you, friends and family, to come along and watch this from the competition.
So what is the Eagle Invitational? It is a drone competition hosted at the Westmoreland High School gym by the UAV plus drone class. It will be on a Wednesday, December 10th, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
6:00 a.m. It's 6:00 p.m. to 8:00.
That's not all that, trust me.
I'm gonna say 6:00. 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We are inviting six to seven schools. There will be a max of four flight teams per school. We create the concept of a regional drone plus UAV competition for all competitors involved.
Why are we hosting this event? Our region does not have a drone competition. We want to get to know other schools who does this, okay, fly drones. We have qualified for the state competition in spring. We have nothing noticed until then. And we want to raise money for the state competition in the spring.
So our team competitors will have local teams, mostly local teams, will showcase their UAV slash drone skills in a throwing competition that will be hosted in the gym. The competition format will be single elimination tournament, leading to a final four showdown for three trophies. One for first, one for second, and one for third.
iFlyDrones, event sport, enabled state fair competition. There will be two obstacle course arenas for this contest. And iFlyDrones are going to be the official scorekeeper. Accurate scoring provided by iFlyDrones expert.
They are a company. The iFlyDrones, iFlyDrones is a company located in Richmond. They mostly are, do drone-related activities. The most recent thing that they have hosted that I remember was when we did our last competition at the state fair, they hosted that event. They were the ones to score check and everything. So, ticket cost. For per participant during the event, it'll cost $10 for per participant, which will be $20 per team. And it'll be $8 for the spectators that come to watch the event. It will be $7 profit with $1 going to GoFans, the people who we're using for the tickets. We will have a website for them soon, very soon. We base the spectators prices off the volleyball prices for when they lasted their event.
Angelo's Italian Restaurant sponsoring pizza for the competitors.
Nice.
Delicious pizza. Competitors will enjoy pizza served by Angelo's at the event. Community support. Angelo's sponsorship highlights local business involvement in supporting school events. The schools are gonna be here a bit like hours early before the event, so they'll, they have something to eat before any actual competition starts.
Also, some of them may be coming from a while away, like maybe an hour or two away. So we do not know if they will be hungry. We just, we'll be private pizza just in case they are hungry. So help we need from the school board. We, if you could, we would like for you to sponsor our, sponsor for our drinks, our cups, plates, and the ice for our competitors to not be thirsty. and the ice for our competitors to not be thirsty. We'd also like to help with sponsors to raise $500 in total to pay for the cost of our iFlyDrones. We have currently two sponsors.
How much each?
100 each. Another thing, we would like for you all, possibly y'all, to come and bring your friends and family. And for last, lastly, we'd also like for y'all to spread the word of the competition.
Let me worry about that. Done.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all for watching. Y'all have any questions?
Cups, plates, et cetera. How many people are we looking at?
Ew. So for spect, not spectators.
Not competitors?
Yeah, 50. We are looking to have a total of 50 competitors.
A couple, a couple things. For concessions for the spectators, is that something that you're going to do for fundraising or are you able to do that? Just their captive audience, just suggestion?
I mean, you've got, we also have the machines there. I mean, we thought we were going to rely on the machines there. I mean, what's your thought, Mr. Batcake? This is one thing we haven't really talked, we keep talking about. What do you think?
We can ask for people to come and help for concessions for the people who attend. We do it for our basketball games, who will probably come here for next day.
Our metric, we're guessing maybe 100 spectators. We've never done this before, so we don't really know. 100, that looks nice. So that's kind of what we're guessing.
Um, then one other question, and I don't know if you even know this, we have, for instance, our academic team. Okay, that's a VHSL sponsored competition, okay, and you get standings for that, right? Is this something where VHSL has expressed any interest in this? And if not yet, is that something that we can lobby for? Because it seems like it's a, it's a good type of competition.
I, I, I'm not sure if there's anything in VHS, VHSL. We are affiliated with Skills USA. So the state fair competition with Skills USA, so Skills USA has agreed to endorse it. It's not a formal Skills USA competition. Anybody who comes can get Skills USA points. The state director, Mr. Kalinsky, is associated with Skills USA, and the state director for Skills USA is going to come to see what we do. So they'll be there. So there is a Skills USA umbrella that'll, that'll be there too. So that's, there's a, there's a tie there, but I'm not so sure about the state.
Just, just a thought.
No, no, I, I agree. I think in the long term, I think that's a good plan, but, you know, and this came about, and they haven't really mentioned it. When we were coming back from the state fair, we were told, hey, now you can go to the states and win the state competition. They said it's May. Okay, what's between now and May? So we said, let's do something. So get ready.
When they said that they have, they're as far away as Lynchburg, right?
Yes. We have a couple teams coming from Lynchburg and Norfolk Hampton area right now.
Yeah, so just a couple hours really, because a lot more than just a couple hours.
Yeah, you're talking about four hours probably from Lynchburg, so.
So what kinds of things do you all make the drones do during competition?
Well, during the competition, we'll have some courses set up during it, which will be net off so that if something does happen, they've not had spectators during it. We'll have, uh, course wise, it'll be a couple, it'll be rings that will fly through. There'll also be a landing pad that will be in like a vertical tube that we'll have to land in and then take back off. There may, there will be ping pong balls that you'll have to knock off little towers and hopefully not crash. And also a tunnel that you'll have to go through after, the setup's not finished.
Cool.
Well, and the other thing we need to do is we need to call out Chris Evans over there in the corner. He's done an excellent job of supporting us from CTE standpoint, so a lot of the equipment, the drones, we've had, this is the first year we've had a drone program. So he's done a really, really good job of helping us and allowing us to buy weird things like the tunnels you crawl through and some of the other things along the way, hula hoops. So glad you didn't ask me what those are for. I'd love to quit asking questions.
And for the vertical land, they will stop the timer, and once you lift off, the timer will run, will run again. So we wasn't sure of this during the state fair because we'd never done it before. So when you land, it will stop the timer where you're at. When you lift off, it will continue your timer until you finish the entire course.
Well, and the other thing I'll mention is the guy who runs iFlyDrones, he's retired twice, and he does this as a hobby. So when I called him and talked to him, he was very excited about some of the stuff we're looking at doing. We're going to do two arenas back to back, which he's not done before, just so he can stage and fly, so he moves a lot faster. So it's a lot of new stuff we're doing, and I talked to him about how much he would charge, and he said, look, if you'll just cover my costs for 500 bucks. They're coming from Richmond. He's bringing his team for 500 dollars. He's like a steal. And he's like, yeah, this is great. I want, I want to encourage more people. So he's really making this a deal and he's excited about coming and doing this with us. So I think it'll be good all the way around.
And did you say where you're setting the course up?
Uh, they'll be set up as a gym, probably on the basketball court.
Yeah, and they'll be back, the arenas will be back to back.
I just wanted to know. I get to go down at least once a week or twice every two weeks and talk to them about different things. So this year it's, I've been involved with CTE class as well, their CIS class as well as the drone, so I get excited.
Yeah, yeah. Any other comments, questions from anyone? You did a great job. Thank both of you, Mr. Lightfoot. Thank you. Okay, next we have public comments. Ms. Rice, do we have any public comments that were submitted prior to our meeting?
No, sir.
Do we have any public comments from anyone present? Yes, sir. Mr. Ingram? Yes, and I will read our requirements, which we do for everyone. Obviously, we would like for you to state your name and your topic. We know we can find your contact information, so we're not too concerned about that. And also, we, we do typically ask that public comments be limited to three minutes. And so given that, you can proceed.
All right. My name is Matt Ingram, a Westmoreland County resident. Topics are a couple entities that are going into the old high school and talking about student empowerment. I'll start with student empowerment first. It's great to see student engagement like that and student-led presentations. Case some of y'all don't know, but I, I'm one-fifth employed by Westmoreland County Schools, and so I teach at the Northern Acad Tech Center. So when programs are talking about CTE and Skills USA, I get excited. I also get excited when I saw Nashville Auto Diesel on there and the apprenticeship school on there as colleges, post-secondary education that these students are getting exposed to, because that's a big part of my life. It's a very passionate part of my life. So thank you to Westmoreland County for seeing that and, and seeing the big picture that, you know, there are options out there that these students can go and be successful and career-ready they want. So thank you for what you do with that. Thank you for taking the time for the presentations from Hearts in Motion and from Transitional Base Service. Hopefully, we can get, work together. We did have students come up there and help. It started with the Boys and Girls Club, getting that, getting those students involved with working on that building. We require community service hours for our graduates, and I tell you, those students of mine last year really just took to it like a fish to water and went above and beyond, worked on weekends to try to get ready for the Boys and Girls Club. I had students drove from different localities, all the way from Claret, all the way over here to Westmoreland County, and all the way up from closer parts of Lancaster. You're getting here to help Westmoreland County get this Boys and Girls Club going. So just wanted to say shout out to the students. We had students come up a couple weeks ago to help clean up for the space where Hearts and Motion is going to be. And everything goes good. Y'all give me a thumbs up. We're going to be there tomorrow to start working on that annex building. So just thank you for everything you do. Thank you for the consideration. I know y'all don't get this enough as public officials, but thank you for donating and giving your time to your community. So thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comments? Okay, at this time, our public comment period is closed. Next, we have our consent agenda for personal appointments and resignations. You have copies of board minutes from the October 20 regular session and also the November 6 school board retreat. And you have copies of the school division bills and school nutrition bills. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Daniel Wallace, so moved.
Second?
Rosemary, Rosemary Mahan, second.
Ms. Mahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Richards?
Aye.
Dr. Wallace?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Okay, next, we have our action items, donations and school gifts. Ms. Rice?
Yes, sir. We have received quite a few donations this month from individuals and organizations in the community. Copel Elementary School received from Stratford Harbor Smile Makers clothes, shoes and personal hygiene items valued at $125. And from the Knights of Columbus Coats for Kids Program, received winter coats valued at $650. At Washington District Elementary School, the Liggins family donated school supplies valued at $100. Paul's Supermarket gave six pumpkins for the pre-K class valued at $60. The Saunders family gave clothes for the clinic valued at $150. The Vivier's family gave Harvest Festival decor valued at $100. Colonial Beach Food Lion gave eight cakes for the Harvest Festival valued at $57. Katie Hutt, one of our teachers, gave tattoos, temporary tattoos, for the, for the Harvest Festival, sorry, Dr. Wallace, valued at $5. Ms. Deirdre Bruno, another teacher, gave Dum Dum Suckers and Spiders for the Harvest Festival valued at $30. Donna Clark gave tattoos, Candy and Spiders for the Festival valued at $25. The Steele family gave candy for the Harvest Festival, $10. Brittany Hayes, another teacher, candy for the Harvest Festival, $10. Wendelson Apparado, another teacher, gave candy for the Harvest Carnival, $10. Carla Canetti, another teacher, gave candy valued at $10. And Patricia Ochoa also gave candy for Harvest Festival valued at $15. Alicia Wilson gave McDonald's toys for the Harvest Festival valued at $20. Anna Small made a PTO monetary donation valued at $100. Garner's Produce gave 70 pumpkins valued at $210. And moving to Montress Middle School, Ms. Amanda Jett gave student incentives for English Project-Based Learning valued at $30. Aretha Jones gave student incentives for the same English Project-Based Learning valued at $12. An anonymous donor gave incentives for teachers valued at $20. And the Tapahannic Food Lion gave incentives for Family Night valued at $40. So we present all of these donations to the board for acceptance and gratitude to all those who donated.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. In accordance with our policy KH, is there a motion to approve the donations as presented?
Daniel Wallace, so moved.
Second?
Second, Rebecca Minor.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I did, I heard all ayes, so that means no one opposed. Okay, next, Ms. Rice, you have a budget resolution to present?
Yes, sir. We have some additional funds that have come into the school division or available to the school division. And we have a resolution for the Westmoreland County Board of Supervisors to appropriate the new state and federal grant funds to our FY 25-26 budget. The state grant funds consist of funds for jobs for Virginia graduates and the recently received school security equipment grant. Federal funds consist of some Title 1A, 1003A school improvement grant funds, Title 2A funds and Title 5B rural and low income dollars. Specifically, jobs for Virginia graduates. The grant amount received is $30,000. School improvement grant funds, $20,000. For Title 2A, our appropriation came in a little higher than what we had budgeted, so $5,740.91. Our rural and low income funds award is $54,052.44. And the school security equipment grant that you heard about last month, that's $240,000. So the total state appropriation is $270,000. Total federal appropriation, $79,793.35 for a grand total appropriation of new dollars from grant funds to the school division, $349,793.35. So with board approval of the resolution, we'll then send this resolution over to the county office for approval by the board of supervisors.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Rice? Okay, is there a motion to approve the budget resolution as presented by Ms. Rice?
So, May, Rosemary Mahan.
Is there a second?
Amy Richards, second.
Ms. Mahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Richards?
Aye.
Dr. Wallace?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the budget resolution is approved as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All good news.
Yes, we like getting additional revenue.
Okay, our next action is winter break for 12-month employees.
Yes, sir. As we request every year, we are requesting some additional time off for 12-month employees during the winter break. So policy GCBDR6 gives 12-month employees New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day and the day after Christmas off without using leave. Following board policy, our 12-month employees would be required to work December 22nd, 23rd, 29th, 30th and January 2nd. We are requesting of the board that we be permitted to close all the schools, all offices for the duration of the holiday break and allow our 12-month employees to be off for the entire break without using leave. So including those additional five days, so long as the employees make up the time that they're missing for those five days during the remainder of the 25-26 school year.
Any questions for Ms. Rice? Anyone?
Just a comment that, we know that they already work well more than that.
Yes.
Anyway, this just gives them a chance to recoup some of the extra time.
Yes.
So is there a motion to approve the winter break for 12-month employees as presented by Ms. Rice?
So, move Rebecca Minor.
Is there a second?
Second, Daniel Wallace.
Any discussion? Ms. Mahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Richards?
Aye.
Dr. Wallace?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the winter break for 12-month employees is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And the crowd says, thank you.
So next we have our VSVA legislative priorities, Ms. Rice. And this isn't really an action item, but I do think we need to get a board concurrence at least so that our delegate to the delegate, the delegate assembly at the Virginia School Board Association Convention knows how to vote. So, Ms. Rice?
Thank you. Yes, sir. So it's, it's listed as a discussion so that you all can discuss and give some guidance to Ms. Richards on the will of the board. Development of legislative positions by the Virginia School Board Association. All position statements of VSVA are approved by the delegate assembly at the annual convention, so coming up next week. The assembly is composed of one person from each member school board, chosen as the official spokesperson for the board. So you all selected as our delegate, Ms. Amy Richards for this year, and her alternate delegate is Ms. Rebecca Minor. So the process, I need to look down here because it's too tiny for me up there. Each spring Legislative Positions Committee seeks suggestions from local boards, and you're familiar with that because our board has submitted suggestions for legislative positions in various years. Local boards submit proposed amendments, deletions and new positions to the legislative position. Positions Committee. That committee then meets and reviews all the suggestions. Positions are recommended out of that committee, and those are presented to the Board of Directors. So, not everything makes it out of committee, but those that are favorable make it out of committee to the Board of Directors for approval, and then those are distributed to each school board and the delegate assembly. And then, this is the step we're on. In the fall, the delegate assembly meets to adopt or reject proposed amendments and any new positions. And then, once those are officially adopted at the delegate assembly, they become part of the legislative positions of the VSPA, and they remain in effect until that is revised and they are deleted or officially approved. So, there are quite a few standing legislative positions, and you all have access to the handbook. I won't cover all of those, but specifically, you're welcome. They're broken out into these categories, and the number you see in parentheses is the number of adopted existing legislative positions of the VSPA in each of these categories. So, you can see there are quite a few. And then, they continue into these categories. So, overall, there are 12 categories of legislative position with quite a few. You see, a big one there is state mandates and budgeting. So, there are proposed amendments and new positions that Ms. Richards will be voting on on behalf of the board at this year's delegate assembly. There are only three, though, this year. It's a small number. So, there's a proposed amendment to Legislative Priority 1.7, and that's just adding a paragraph to the position on assessment reform and accountability reform, that the VSPA supports legislation to provide school divisions with a minimum of one full academic year to prepare for and implement any major policy changes that affect curriculum, instruction, assessment, or accountability systems. Yeah. So, I think a big part of that, as Ms. Minor said, the cut scores being implemented immediately was a concern when this was submitted, and the cut scores now will be implemented over a phased-in period. But VSPA would include this amendment to apply to any future changes that DOE would like to make, to reinforce that we need time to prepare for any transitions.
So, it would be good on this one to hear from board members, and also, Ms. Richards, if you have any questions. And also, Ms. Minor, because you are the alternate, just in case.
No, I just think that that's valuable, you know, for us to have all been grown and we're going to make this transition this year, that all of a sudden our students have to have this new pass rate without any time to prepare the teachers for that, as well as the students, to meet this new goal. It's a work in progress. You have to attain step-by-step goals and that, so.
It's kind of crazy that this even has to be stated, okay? But it is what it is, so, I mean, absolutely, I would support it.
Yeah, I think it's critical because it's likely to happen again.
Well, this doesn't mean that they're going to abide by it. We're just saying that's what we.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I know.
This is what we want.
But the pain that we would have to endure, had they not done on a bad face, would have been pretty bad, I think. It sounds like to me that all of our board members support this.
Yes.
That's what I hear. That work for you and Ms. Richards?
Absolutely, just like the federal government, you know, you have the grandfather clause and work your way into things. It's not a hard stop, Michelle.
All righty.
Okay. All right, the next amendment is to Legislative Position 3.3, Enrollment Cap for Virtual Virginia. And you can see, I've excerpted a little bit out of the position, and what's new is the underlined wording. So, Virginia school divisions continue to face drastic budget cuts at both the state and local levels and federal, and are faced with the possibility of eliminating classes. It used to say especially advanced placement courses, and that has been changed to say including advanced placement courses, dual enrollment, and other similar courses. Virtual Virginia has an overall cap on the number of students in the Commonwealth who can enroll in its online courses at no cost to localities. That's the wording that has been added, "at no cost to localities." The enrollment cap in Virtual Virginia should be increased from its present capacity to accommodate more students to participate, including in advanced courses in a cost-effective manner that may not be offered in school divisions without qualified staffing. So, it goes to the cost of Virtual Virginia, but also why we access Virtual Virginia classes. We don't have staffing to offer everything.
And I know one of our goals is to increase the number of courses that we can offer, and I think this is critical for us to be able to do that. Other board members?
Yeah, I do have a question. I would even offer maybe a suggestion that Ms. Richards could bring this as an amendment to it. But we list, you know, AP dual enrollment and other similar courses. That other similar courses, you know, I'm thinking, are we talking CTE certifications, things like that? And if so, I would recommend that we actually call those out explicitly.
And I would agree with that.
An idea of what that precise verbiage might need to be that would make it very clear that when we say other similar courses, that's the kind of thing that we also want to include.
So, would you like to back? I know you mentioned CTE.
CTE and certifications.
Yeah. Or workplace-ready, you know?
Things that go to either, you know, they're going on to further education in college or work placement, such things, CTE.
But, and I apologize that I don't know the exact verbiage, but I feel like that should be explicitly captured in there because some people might just think, oh, it's just those, you know, higher academic things of AP and dual enrollment. It's like, no, this applies to some of those other additional classes that we may not have all of the workforce and the staffing to teach adequately without something like Virtual Virginia.
And I think typically, when one person stands up and suggests an amendment, usually there are other individuals that support that.
Yeah.
Based on my experience. Is that?
That's been my experience as well. And as far as the process, what they'll do is they will just say, does anyone want to remove any of these from the global vote? Okay? Because normally, I mean, it's rare that they have only three, but normally, they'll just say, okay, here's the 15 items that we're going to vote on. Does anyone want to pull one out for discussion? And then, you say, yeah, let's pull this one. And then, just say, we'd like to expand that to include, and then, maybe we as a board right now can come up with some verbiage that might be appropriate to add, so it's not just, because I think it'll be viewed as limited to that if we don't, even though it says and other similar courses, it might overly constrain it.
And I was, I guess we're kind of lucky tonight, and, all right, so, since I have Matthew, I'm going to use you.
So, you can talk about workforce development or career-ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like those terms.
Yeah.
Courses.
And I was going to say, do we have, does Virtual Virginia currently use, have any of those offerings?
Using it right now for early childhood education.
Okay.
Yes.
So, there you go. Yeah, so, career readiness is definitely some keywords you'd want to put in there.
Yeah, so, Ms. Richards, okay, the verbiage we may want to add, and you could just put this as a friendly amendment, and then they can, you know, discuss it amongst themselves. But career readiness and workforce development?
Workforce development or workforce training?
Workforce training, okay. Just insert it after, in dual enrollment. I mean, they can still keep the other similar courses, but I'd like it to expand that just a little bit.
Okay. To get them to think outside of the academic box.
You will have to get up and go to a microphone to express this after you've said, I'd like to pull this out of the discussion.
Sure, I'm comfortable.
I just don't want to throw you to the wolves. It's kind of intimidating.
They might even bring the microphone to you. Okay, anything else on this one? And are all board members okay? And Ms. Rice, I say board members, but governance team members?
Absolutely.
Okay with the suggested change? Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, last one. This one's a new position, and that is the VSPA supports removing chronic absenteeism as an indicator in the accountability and accreditation models used to rate public schools.
For me, and I've had conversations with other school board members about this, but we can strive to do all that we can to address chronic absenteeism. However, we cannot put ourselves in the place of a parental role or combat situations that we just cannot address on our own as a school board or school division. There are circumstances beyond our ability that is affecting our student population. And for it to count against the work that is happening and that we're trying to achieve, it's just, this can be very much a detriment to what we are doing and can be, you know, an X on our score or whatever, when we're trying to address the absenteeism, but we're also trying to meet the individuals, the students, the families where they are and what their real needs are. And there's only so much that we can do.
This reminds me of the 100% thing. Just throw it in there, and if you don't meet it, then you're a bad school. I'm sick of hearing that.
Ms. Minor, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Wallace.
I was just going to say, you know, I fully support this, notwithstanding, though, yes, we will still continue to work on this. We just don't feel like it's, you know, it's something we want to be judging and painting all of our students with a stigma that is outside of their control.
Anyway, Ms. Minor, you stated that very well.
Well, just say, you're a problem child when you can't control your circumstances, and you can't control what's going on, and, you know, and our job is to do our best to reach their needs to our ability.
And we're going to do that.
And to support them and encourage them.
Yeah, I certainly, well, I agree with this. And the way it is now, I think all the things that we have that make our school system great may not be recognized with that being an indicator in terms of accreditation. I mean, I feel that way. So, if it went away, it would be a real plus.
I do want to add with what Dr. Wallace was saying is that we do have a way of working towards this goal. I think that trying to figure out how we get backup, whether that's the court system or whatever is needed for certain situations, there definitely can be ways of improving upon the ways in which we're trying to work through the system of that, if that makes sense.
And based on discussions we've had, I think we would need court system assistance in being able to better address chronic absenteeism. Ms. Rice?
Agreed.
Ms. Richards, are you okay? I think I heard all the board members really agree with that, so, if you're okay.
Yes, and I do, too. I can't think of one positive thing that will come out of leaving that in there.
And I agree. All right. Ms. Rice, anything else to add?
No, that's all.
Yeah, okay. I do want to thank, Ms. Richards, thank you so much for being willing to serve as a delegate. It's typically a bit of a two-hour session, and it also means you're likely to miss two of the break-eight sessions, and that's a real negative of doing this.
That's why we have a team, but I'm.
Yeah, but that is why we have a team. And Ms. Minor, thank you so much for agreeing to be the alternate because you always have to be prepared as the alternate, so, thank you very much for that. Okay, next, Ms. Rice, VSPA policy update?
Yes, sir. This is unusual because there's only one, one policy.
No instruction.
And it is home instruction, homeschool policy. And you all saw the memo that came out from the VSPA explaining the why of this policy. There have been questions about how much information school divisions may release to the state and to others for students whose parents have opted to homeschool, either based on religious exemption or straight home instruction. So, the policy, VSPA has reviewed the policy. They've determined their policy is adequate. It checks all the boxes. It is aligned with the law despite some of the concerns that have been voiced. But they still did a little additional wordsmithing on the policy, and specifically, I'm sorry, Chris, if you would scroll all the way to the red line part. And go to page three of the red line version. That's it, thank you. Specifically, what they're trying to make more explicit in policy is that the superintendent and the board may disclose information with written consent from the parent, and only the information that the parent has said we can share, that it can be shared for both students who are homeschooled through religious exemption and who are homeschooled for other reasons. They're just trying to make that a little more explicit within the policy so that it's not perceived as only students who are homeschooled for religious exemption. So, since it's just the one policy, I'm bringing it for first read. You all may decide to waive first read and go ahead with adoption, but if you would like to ponder it, we can bring it back for action next month.
I do want to hear from board members, but it does seem like to me it's a fairly simple change, and it would be nice, in my opinion, to be able to act on it and not have to bring it back. So, given that, do I hear a motion to approve the VSPA policy update as presented by Ms. Rice?
Amy Richards, so moved.
Second?
Second, Ms. Mayhan.
Any discussion? Ms. Mayhan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Richards?
Aye.
Mrs. Minor?
Aye.
Dr. Wallace?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the policy update is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a Heroes update. We have a team?
They're going to support me from the audience, I think.
Ah, okay. Well, that's better than no support.
Good evening. We are excited to share that we are ready to begin our Heroes program for the 2025-2026 school year. Just as a reminder, we began Heroes at Washington District in 2015-2016, and expanded to Copel Elementary during the 2016-2017 school year. It was on hiatus during COVID, and we reinstated it last year during the spring. Heroes, each volunteer is paired with the elementary student, and they meet with the student for 30 minutes a week. They facilitate sessions, different activities, just encouragement, mentorship, and it also helps to promote good attendance. Students really get excited about meeting with their hero every week. So, it's very beneficial for our students, and talking about the attendance, this kind of helps us because they look forward to meeting with their hero every week. Our timeline, we've been trying to recruit since August, really since the end of last spring, but August until the present, we are still looking for volunteers. Tomorrow, we have orientation with three of our heroes. So, again, we're trying to recruit. We need more heroes, that's more students that can participate in the program. And then, we're going to get started. Our heroes who participate in orientation tomorrow will be ready to begin with their students in December. We have reached out to our elementary principals and school counselors and. and they are getting their lists together and getting permission from parents to have their child participate in the program. So we look to begin in December, right before winter break. And then it'll carry on through till I think the end of April. So please spread the word. We do have our volunteers, of course, go through a security process, TV screening, background checks, and they get an ID badge so that they're official when they go into the building. Again, we have it on our information on Facebook. It's on our division website. Contact myself, Leslie Steele. We have Carol Washington and Julie Leese available as well if there are any questions. But please spread the word. We are looking for more volunteers. Again, this is a great program. We want to have as many students participate as possible. And that's all I have. Yes, sir.
Real quick question. Do you happen to have like a press release that you could make?
I can have one for you tomorrow.
Well, I was thinking, not for me, I was thinking something that you could give Richard because this would be, I mean, this is a phenomenal program. And I can't think of a better, you know, vehicle than the Westmoreland News as a means of of getting that word out there.
I can get that together and just include it with our flyer. Our flyer has a QR code that folks who are interested can scan. They complete the Google form. That information comes directly to us and then we contact them, put them in contact with our director of HR to get the security information that we need and the background check and then we're good to go. So we'll definitely get something to ready for Westmoreland News.
How long is the orientation session?
Usually about 30 minutes to an hour.
And you have this already on Facebook? Will we use it? Share it out?
Facebook, on our webpage. We've been including it in the staff newsletters, the community newsletters. The elementary schools, I think, have been including it in their newsletters as well.
And orientations here?
Yes.
In the boardroom?
Or is it next to it? In here, I'm sorry, in here.
Yeah, okay. Well, I hope, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank everybody involved in the heroes program. It is, it's not only important, I think in many cases it's critical. And so hopefully your presentation tonight and hopefully some in attendance and some listening will come forward and volunteer.
I hope so.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, Ms. Rice, we have facility update?
Yes, we have an exciting facility update. Mr. Fallon had asked me to give an update on the Washington District project. And so I am going to do that, but I also snuck in another project. I knew you would like that. We have completed one of our capital projects, the Montross Middle School gym lighting. So you remember, we contracted with Musco Sports Lighting LLC to remove all the overhead lights that were in the gymnasium at Montross Middle. We were able to use a lot of the existing electrical panels and wiring. And then they put in new 25 LED light fixtures to replace the 25 old lights that they took out. And everything does have a 10-year warranty. So this was the design that you all saw where they were gonna place, it's just a nice grid of 25 overhead lights. This is the before picture. And you can see a number of those overhead lights are not lit. And that was not because of bulbs. They just had not worked for a really long time. And then here is the after picture.
Pretty awesome.
It's a pretty dramatic change in the amount of light in the gymnasium. And here's just another look at how well-lit the gymnasium is now with the new lights. And all 25 lights are lit, not just some of them. So that was an exciting update I wanted to share with you. And then the topic that I was asked to present on, the Washington District's security vestibule. The exciting news there is today we advertise, we publish the advertisement for bids for the work to be done at Washington District. So the project scope includes about 1,000 square feet addition. That includes a new main office space and a new safe and secure vestibule. And it also includes approximately 2,500 square feet that will be renovated. And that's the existing administrative suite that's being changed around to make it more secure and the front entry common space. So the whole purpose of this project, and you've heard it and heard it and heard it, it's all about enhancing school safety and security. So this is an overhead look at Washington District Elementary with the front of the school being where you see the red. That's the current entrance area. But the whole red box to the left there, and I'm gonna zoom in, that will be the new main office. And that's where the current courtyard is. There's also a little gap between the current opening and the right-hand wall. So you see that small red box. That will be enclosed and become a security checkpoint. So the part that sticks out is a new canopy so that students and visitors can be undercover while they're waiting to enter. But students will still enter through the main doors into the building. And they will still go through backpack scanner and the walkthrough metal detectors. But our visitors now will need to be buzzed in to enter through a new main office, the big red box. They will be buzzed into the new main office and their entrance will be separate from that of our students. So we'll have an opportunity to scan their driver's licenses as we do now through the Raptor system and to have them pass through walkthrough metal detector before they can get into the main building with the student population.
What about the doors on the end? That lead into the parking lot to the right?
Far right.
The far right, those will still be student entrance. And so we will have the stand-up metal detectors and the backpack scanner located within the vestibule now as opposed to within the main lobby. So students will pass through their security checkpoint before getting all the way into the lobby as they do now.
So the buses will be dropping the kids off there rather than over here?
The buses are gonna continue to drop off out front like they do now. It looks different because the canopy is drawn there. But that canopy will extend from the current front doors almost out to the bus loop.
Well, and that's why I'm wondering, why are we keeping those doors open if the kids are gonna still be coming in through this way then?
I'm sorry, which doors are you?
I'm talking about those doors next to the cafeteria.
Oh, down on the far right end?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, that's where our car riders have been coming in temporarily. No, they're actually coming around to the front too. Staff is coming in down on that end. So all of our students will be coming in through the main entrance.
Yeah, so I mean, my concern is that someone could try to come in on those doors at the end without going through the checkpoint. Wouldn't you want to block them and have them come in through the main checkpoint area?
Yes, those doors are locked. Those doors are locked and will continue to be locked.
You'll still need to regress.
Seegress only.
Egress.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yes, yep. Yeah, so the doors will remain, but they are locked and you can't enter that.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you. I was having trouble with the question.
I was a little confused. That's good.
And then the upper part is the existing, it's kind of a bluish. That's the existing
Admin area.
Admin area and the existing teacher work room. So that is being repurposed. And what's nice about that is the principal's office, the assistant principal's office and the AP, I mean, the SRO's office are all being brought from deep within. Yeah, up to the front where they can see the front entrance and see the main office and see the lobby area all from their office spaces.
Yep.
So that too will greatly enhance the security. So bid timeline, the advertisement for bids was published today. Tomorrow, beginning tomorrow, digitally formatted copies of the contract documents are gonna be available starting at 10:00 AM from Grim and Parker. That'll be Dave Wolfe and one of his colleagues. And their email addresses are included in the advertisement for bid. Also included in the advertisement for bid are Ronnie Saunders' email address, mine, and Ms. Chatham's. So that anybody who is interested in completing a site visit to assist them in making a bid can schedule an appointment to do that. Sealed bids are gonna be received up until 2:00 PM on December 15th. And then they will be opened here in this room and unsealed publicly, read aloud publicly on December 15th. And that's all I have. So that's our latest update.
Questions, comments? So then we'll find out how good our estimate is.
Yes. Yes.
That's always a bit scary.
That is when we get to find out how close the estimate is to the actual, yes.
But anyway, this is, it is exciting. And once this is completed, all of our schools will be secure as we connect them. It'll be a major accomplishment. Thank you very much.
And part of the contract documents, it does specify that we need whoever wins the bid to be able to be positioned to start the work as soon as we dismiss school for the summer and complete it, at least substantial completion to the point of usability before we open the next school year. So it's a small window of time to complete the work. But that's all included in the expectations.
Do you have a questions or comments, Ms. Rice? Okay, Ms. Mayhan, do you have any report from the Northern Neck Technical Center?
I do. Okay, so right now, the Horticulture and Landscaping Group is having their fall fruit and nuts fundraiser. So, and that'll be going on till the 19th of November, which is this week. Yeah, this is Monday, right? So Wednesday.
Today's the 17th, yep.
Kind of flying by. So if you all are interested, please go to the northernnecktech.org website and order your fruit and/or nuts from them. And I don't believe I have anything else at this time right now.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Wallace, do you have anything from the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School?
And I'll keep it brief because we're almost done here. Just a reminder, our own, I say our own, but Dr. Rob Wright is the director of the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School, doing a phenomenal job. He's really hit the ground running and he's doing well. Just a reminder to everyone, there are 14 divisions that are making up the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. So it's a pretty wide-ranging effort there. And it's essentially, think of it as a magnet school for this area. Talking about that though is we have a capacity of somewhere around like 260 students. We're only filling about 227 of those slots right now. So there's some room, especially like at Warsaw, which is where our students go. So I bring this up just to let everyone know that, hey, you know, we need to, you know, get more kids into that program for a couple of reasons. One, it's a phenomenal, you know, opportunity, but also it, you know, really helps you know, keep the tuition rate down because, you know, our cost of the teachers is fixed. We can take more students and we actually get more state funding, the more students we have. And so it actually would bring our costs down if we gave more students. So that's just something I'll throw out there. You know, I don't know if we have a delta between how many we're sending and how many would qualify, but we, I'm trying to advocate for, hey, let's send more. There is an open house for anyone who's interested coming up on December 9th. It's in Warsaw at RCC. That's from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, again, December 9th. And if you could get the word out so people know that they can go out and do that. Unfortunately, I'll be gone. I'll be in Philadelphia.
It's the same night as the Northern Neck Technical Center.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, 6:00 to 7:00, you said?
6:00 to 7:30, yeah. But if we can get that out to the students, Mr. Bathgate, especially, you know, the freshmen and then for the middle schoolers, you know, it doesn't hurt to at least let them know that this is an option. They can go out there and and just see what the program is all about.
Well, actually, as fast as Pat Pugh goes through the program, we could probably be here.
You should still be there. Okay, but yeah, I just wanna plug the program there. It's doing well though.
Any questions for Dr. Wallace? Ms. Rice, upcoming events?
Yes, sir. Coming up this week. I said next week, but it's this week. We have the VSBA workshop for student school board reps in Williamsburg. And Ms. Bedford, who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, but she is attending the student school board rep session. And then the VSBA annual convention is the 19th through the 21st. We have a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on November 24th at 6 o'clock at the George D. English Building to hear the bids or vote on bid, winning bids for the capital improvement financing and to vote on the memorandum of agreement. And then on December 10th, we have a communication forum meeting here in this room at 2 o'clock. Mr. Fallon will be representing the board. Dr. Wallace is unfortunately now not able. So if a second board member wants to accompany Mr. Fallon as the second board representative at Communication Forum, that opportunity is now open.
And questions for Ms. Rice?
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, next, school board member comments. I would like to start out about travel plans for the VSBA. I think typically most of us drive because of the convenience and sometimes some people have early bird and some aren't going to early bird. But I at least want to ask in case there needs to be in a carpool.
I'm going to early bird. Anybody who wants to buy, please do.
And you leave in Wednesday morning?
I was gonna leave Wednesday morning. That's what I'm gonna plan on, yeah. Although you said 9:00, right?
Yeah, gotta leave early, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Well, anyway, we all know one another. So if anybody, if anybody needs a ride, I'm sure somebody could find one. Okay, all righty. Ms. Mayhan, do you have any comments?
I do not, other than I've had the opportunity, like I said, to be at the National Armored Society this week and with the kids and the CTE programs and stuff. And I just want to say how proud I am of our kids. They're just so excited. They're, you know, there's a lot of people that want to say things sometimes, but if they could just go and see our kids in action learning. It's phenomenal.
Well, it's not anything quite like being there on bed in schools. But one of the reasons that we do try to have students participate in our board meetings is at least to let people know that we do have outstanding students and programs. Okay, thank you. Ms. Monner?
I just would like to say a thank you to Mr. Matt Ingram, Board Supervisor, Representative this evening at our meeting. But just for your push and support for the Boys and Girls Club, but also working with us for those that are coming in for the WNL school. I know that you have really, really pushed the student involvement and the work that's being done. And we are very grateful for your show.
Anything else? Dr. Wallace?
Nothing to add.
Okay, Mrs. Richards?
I just think it's great to see the students come here and represent their area of interest and have that opportunity to speak in front of people. I think that is huge. And I want to encourage more students to do that. And if we could even extend it to our athletes, to have them come and talk about their sports and their wins. I think that would be great.
Thank you. Anything else?
I did have one more thing.
Sure.
For those that were not able to be at the last football game, something that was really cool, and I just want to say kudos to our band directors, is that
is that it was a game of us against Richmond County, and Richmond County's band is a little bit smaller in numbers, and we included them in our time together as bands, and they performed on the field together. I just think it was amazing and awesome and a way to just work in, you know, solidarity with each other and just support, so.
Anything else? Ms. Rice?
Nothing to add.
Okay, all righty. So, our next board meeting, as you've already said, Monday, November the 24th, school board work session. It's a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors beginning at 6:00 PM. And on December the 15th, I think we had something else going on on the 15th as well, didn't we?
The holiday reception.
Oh, well, oh, no, I thought it was something.
Sale bins. Sale bins.
Oh, the bins, yeah. Yeah, I knew it was something else. But anyway, our regular board meeting on December the 5th. Our executive closed session will begin at 4:00 PM. That's out earlier than typical. Our open, open session will begin at 5:00 PM as opposed to 6:00 PM, and then we'll have our holiday reception around 6:00 PM. It depends on how many agenda items Ms. Rice puts on the agenda, correct?
No, how many you put on the agenda?
Maybe we'll work together and see if we can make a small agenda item. So, anyway, is our motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
On favorable signal from, by saying aye? Aye, we are adjourned.